Remove your caps, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need lights down?
Oh, my lights, oh. Full lights. All right. And we do have a little bit of a new format for our agenda, so this is exciting. We're gonna have public comments at the start of the meeting, and it's at this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. And the reason we've done this is, you know, the public comments always said you couldn't talk about anything on the agenda, so you'd come and sit through the meeting, and then if there was something during that meeting, you couldn't, you weren't supposed to talk about it. So if anybody has anything on an agenda item, now would be the time to come to the podium. But this doesn't move your agenda item forward. It just gives you a chance to speak on it. So if anyone has anything they would like to comment on under public comments, you can please go to the podium, state your name and home address. And seeing none, we will move forward. There's no proclamations, that's item number one. Item number two, approval of the amended minutes of the April 22 and April 30, 2019, minutes and approval of the minutes of the meeting of May 13, 2019. And Mary, would you like those separate?
Do them together.
They're together, so.
I'm very pleased that Thunder Ridge Court is into the official documentation. And so I will make a motion to approve the amended minutes of April 22 and 30, along with the minutes of the meeting of May 13.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried, three to zero. All right, we have consent items. And I will read those, and this is item number three. Three A is the manure management plan annual update from Demmer Family Farms. Three B is manure management plan annual update, Streef Farms. And C is manure management plan annual update, Jason Wolf Hog Site. D is original manure management plan, Jason Wolf. E is Class C native wine permit, Park Farm Winery. F is Class LC liquor license, Dubuque Driving Range. G, Class LC liquor license, Graceland Tavern. I had a question, I guess, before we get into approval. Is Mr. Wolf here? No. Okay, Tammy, have you been contacted by Jason Wolf regarding a new hog confinement? Okay. Who would be contacted? I know the DNR, and I haven't had the chance, obviously, today to... Okay. Apparently, it's getting a little more serious because I've heard from neighbors who are concerned about this, so I, I'm trying to, I didn't realize that it, I don't know if it's on here or not, so I guess, I'm not sure how to proceed. I thought one of these was a renewal.
Annual update.
Their annual update.
Dave, the first one for the Jason Wolf Hog Site, that is for his current operation.
That's what I thought.
And then the other one is for letter D, the original manure management plan is what he has submitted with the DNR for a new building he plans to construct. And in the paperwork from the DNR, it says this form is not for confinement feeding operations that are applying for construction permit, because the bigger the operation, they have to have special permits. And what the DNR is saying is, for the size of his operation, he does not have to have the confinement feeding operation construction permit.
Well, where does it say how big it is?
Probably doesn't.
Doesn't.
Well, how do we know?
I don't think the manure management plans...
This is what Jason Wolf had to submit to the DNR.
Okay.
Is this whole thing.
And is that for the new one?
This is for the new one. This is what the DNR looks at.
Can we get a copy of that to receive and file?
And I have a copy of this that stays with the county.
Okay.
And that may have the construction.
This has everything that he plans on doing, the location.
Okay. And, and there was nothing that anybody could have done about this? I got contacted Friday night by the people interested, and I was out there yesterday on Memorial Day. I didn't think I was gonna get anybody from the county to get me any documents, but I do want copies of these. And I'm gonna ask that we table this.
You can pull that off the consent agenda and table it.
Because I have questions, and I think anytime we have questions, I'm not gonna approve something that, you know, I'm not gonna approve Pardon the Pawn, A Pig and a Polk, so. Yes, Tammy? There are some steps that can be taken, and I will give Mr. Wolf credit. I, I don't know that I, I know him or have met him. He did go and meet with neighbors, and that's the first thing that the Iowa Farm Bureau and the Coalition for Iowa Farmers, that's the first thing they recommend. Now, that doesn't mean that all the neighbors are happy about it, because, you know, they wanna know how big, how many hogs. And I agree, the lower the threshold, the less the DNR gets involved. If it's under a certain number, they do it just from their computer. They look at the waterways, they look at, for CARST, they actually have a, they can pull up a CARST map to see if there's gonna be runoff into the wa, you know, underground water, the CARST. But anytime one of these come up, comes up, the neighbors are concerned. We've had, this is the third one that's been discussed since I've been on the board. The other two did not materialize. So I'm gonna ask my counterparts if we can peel off the one in question, approve the, Mr. Wolf's manure management plan for the annual update, and then let us, you know... Because I did look at the site. If, if, if it's gonna go in there, he's gonna need an entrance permit. It's a very narrow driveway going in there. It was his uncle's old place. There's no house, they tore the house down. That's another concern with the neighbors, is nobody's gonna live there. So nobody, you know, nobody be concerned about smells and other issues, so. And again, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, I just want more information, so. Anybody have any?
Is that 3D or 3C? 3D, sorry, I thought. Well, since we discussed it, and the plans, assuming this plan is the correct one, it looks like to be, the estimated annual, annual production is 6,700 animals per year.
Animals, and that's, you go with four tenths for a hog.
It says maximum number of animals confined.
Twenty-four hundred.
Yep, 2,400.
And that's right under the 2,500 threshold. Then the other question that comes up is, they ca, they can call it a different LLC, and they don't have to add them together, because he has other hog confinements close by. But if they call it a different LLC, then they don't have to come, combine them.
He's planning to do an enclosed lagoon with knifed-in or soiled-injection liquid manure.
On-site? That's what I'm guessing, to save transportation costs.
I, I, I just read the headline, so I don't, I don't know.
Again, I haven't heard from Mr. Wolf, I probably will after this, but I have heard from neighbors. And I think, in fairness...
It's good we have this, thank you.
I would want to have a discussion with Mr. Wolf, and, you know, with the numbers that Supervisor Wickham just pointed out, he's, you know, he's gonna need an entrance permit, for sure. But there's also other steps that can be taken to mitigate smells, the bio fans with cedar chips, filter trees, et cetera, so. And those are neighborly things that other farmers have done and have been willing to do.
I'll make a motion to, to table consent item 3D.
Second.
Okay. So motion to table 3D. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right, and then the...
A motion to approve the consent items A, B, C, E, F, and G.
Second.
D, no, C is in cat, E is in everybody. Excluding consent item 3, D is in David.
All right. All right, motion made in second to approve the consent items with the exception of 3D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. All right. Agenda item number four is procurement procedures. And this is proof of publication, and it's in the Dropbox. And it was a request for quotes regarding fuel.
I will make a 4A, proof of publications. I'll make a motion to approve the proof of publication for procurement procedures for Digital Commercial, Cascade Pioneer, and the lovely Telegraph Herald.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the proof of publication. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. Okay. Item 4B, receipt of quotes, fuel for secondary roads.
How many do you have, roughly? One from the city of Dubuque.
You're done with that, dude?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. That's the Sheriff's Department, partner with that.
Okay, looks like we have one bid from Demmer Oil Company. Okay, so we have several different shops that they will be supplying, and this is so many cents, or part of a cent above the rack average is what we go off of, so the state rack average, and they, they bid above that. So for the Farley, or excuse me, Dubuque shop, they're bidding for number two, premium dyed biodiesel, .057 cents. For number one, premium dyed biodiesel, .067. For Gasahole, points, .0507. For the Farley shop, .057 for number two. For number one, .067. For Gasahole, .0507. And then for the rest of the shops that we have out in the county, this is just for number two and number one diesels, biodiesels. So for Bernard, .1279. And .1279 for number two and number one. Actually, they're all .1279. So for Bernard, Fillmore, Worthington, New Vienna, Holy Cross area, and Durango, for number two and number one, all bids, .1279. And that is it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the bids for receipt of quotes for the fuel for the secondary roads, and refer to the county engineer for his approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second to receive, file, and refer to the county engineer. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. All right. 4D, receipt of bids, PCC patching project on C-9Y, Balltown Road, Ridge Road, North Buena Vista Road, project maintenance patching 2020-01.
It's the culvert replacement, right?
This is, this is pavement. This is, this is asphalt.
So are we on D or on C?
C is in cat. Oh, I thought we were on D.
C is in culvert, right?
My bad, I read the wrong one.
So what are we receiving?
Let me read it again.
Culverts.
All right, this, I was on the wrong one.
My bad, I didn't.
4C, receipt of bids, culvert replacement project on Oakland Farms Road, project L-C 2001-73-31.
Okay, this is for a culvert, culvert replacement on Oakland Farms Road. First bid is from Connolly Construction in the amount of $112,478.79. 112,478.79. Okay, the next bid is from Stager Construction in the amount of $81,917.53. The next bid is from Mainline Excavating Company in the amount of $116,666. 116,666. The next bid is from Top Grade Excavating in the amount of $77,706.33. And this is final bid from Chick Fry Excavating in the amount of $128,332.12. And that's final.
Is that it?
Yep.
That's it?
Make a motion to receive and refer the bids to the county engineer for consideration.
I will second that.
Okay, motion made to receive and file and refer the bids to the county engineer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. All right, now we'll go to 4D, receipt of bids, PCC patching project on C-9Y, Balltown Road, Ridge Road, North Buena Vista Road, project maintenance patching 2020-01. That may sound familiar, but...
Okay, the first bid is from Cedar Falls Construction Company, out of, let's see, they're out of Cedar Falls. $288,854. Next bid is from Eastern Iowa Excavating out of Cascade. Bid is for $349,563.05. The next bid is from Horstfeld Construction, amount of $276,704. $276,704.
Bless you.
Next bid is from Iowa Civil Contracting out of Victor, Iowa. Amount of $448,680.50. Next bid is from Midwest Concrete out of Piasta, amount of $352,065.35. Final? Final bid is from Chick Fry Excavating, the amount of $307,844.80.
All the bids? I'll make a motion to receive and file the bids and refer to the county engineer for his recommendation.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to receive and file the bids and refer to the county engineer for his recommendation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right. Next, we have item 4E, which is request for proposals. And that's for furnish and apply pavement, marking, paint for the Dubuque County Secondary Road Department. Anthony, anything on this?
This will be our typical yearly pavement marking program. Mostly, this is gonna be a white edge line with a little bit of center line throughout the county.
Make a motion to approve the request for proposals?
I will second that.
Motion made in second to approve the request for proposals for furnish and apply pavement, marking, paint for secondary roads. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. Item 4F, request for proposal, food service at the law enforcement center. Do we have anybody here to speak to this?
This is the one for the jail, Sheriff Kennedy, it's up with Spotted. So it's due on four o'clock, Friday, June 21st. Every three years, he's said they go out to bid for this, for the food.
He was here this morning, and I asked him if he would consider looking for local sources for food. He said he would, he might consider that, but he's not gonna be shopping at Farmer's Market.
Okay.
Make a motion to request, to approve the request for proposal.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made in second to approve the request for proposals, and that is for the food service at the law enforcement center. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three, zero. So we have item 4G, and that's a request for proposal, purchase of 100 body worn cameras with software and equipment for the sheriff's department. There's... First documents here.
And so this would be funded with grant funds, and Sheriff Kennedy mentioned that they had specs were a specific type, not a manufacturer's, to keep it open. And many of the specs were similar to what the city's body cameras are, and since we share common IT, that's the direction they went.
Right. It looks like the sealed proposals will be received at the Dubuque County Sheriff's Office in Dubuque, Iowa until 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, June 20th, and open at 11:05 a.m. at the sheriff's office located at 770 Iowa Street, Dubuque, Iowa.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for proposals for the 100 body cameras.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the request for proposal for the body cameras. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. All right, we're going to item number five, which is public hearings. So 5A is proof of publication, public hearing, FY19 budget amendment, number three.
I see that that was published in the Telegraph Herald for Woodward Communications, and so I will approve the proof of publication for the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the proof of publication for the public hearing for FY19 budget amendment number three. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Next is 5B, public hearing, FY19 budget amendment number three. Members of the public may speak to the issue during the public hearing. So I would ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
And I will second that.
Motion made in second to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. So at this point, if anyone is interested in speaking, or would you rather give your synopsis first?
Push Stella out of the way.
I guess, I think I have some discretion here. I would have Stella rather give the presentation if that generates questions. I would have Stella rather give the presentation if that generates questions than, is that?
I think that's fair. Yes. And then people can queue up behind her.
Okay.
Prepared to speak.
Good evening, everyone. So we're here to discuss, uh... We're here to discuss the third and final amendment to the FY19 budget. We had a lengthier discussion at our work session a couple of weeks ago, but I'll do a recap quick of some of the things that we talked about. Sure.
I'll ask you a background question.
Yeah, absolutely.
So this is fiscal year 19 budget.
Yes.
So how many times have we published public notice about fiscal year 19 budget?
So we've made, how many amendments did we make? I would tell you the answer.
We've done three. The original budget, so...
But it's also been published before it was voted on and approved.
Sure. Yep. So there would have been the original publication of the budget before it was approved and work sessions and lots of the information surrounding the original budget. And then we've amended it three times.
So we've published a notice about this budget four times. I think it's worth noting that, you know, the conversation in Des Moines is that...
Transparency purposes?
Well, in the Des Moines, that people, we don't ever publish notice and they're making us publish more notice in the upcoming years. You know, the change in the legislation, it's like, because we amend our budget, it actually gets republished again and again as we go through the amendments, so...
And this is just FYI, I guess, a question?
Sure.
This is the last amendment for FY19, is that not correct?
Correct. So we have to have this amendment completed by the end of May in order to amend the 19 budget. You can't amend in the last month.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's for, I assume for transparency purposes.
We take a good look at everything prior to this amendment to make sure that we are sufficiently budgeting for this year to make sure...
I would expect to read in the newspaper tomorrow, county guilty of an overabundance of transparency regarding budget.
I know you don't write the headlines, Alicia, but that's a good one. That is catchy.
Maybe I missed my day job, huh?
Catchy.
All right.
And now we're into comedy.
Back to you, Stella.
Sure, so the form that I have projected up on the screen is the state budget amendment form. It walks through our revenues and financing sources and then through our expenditures and financing uses. In this amendment, the big change, the 2.2 million would be, it's an in and out. It was a, a grant funding that came in and then is going right back out. That was for the CD BG Disaster Recovery Housing Grant, if you'll recall. The large changes in capital projects would be the reduction of budgeting in 19 because we know that we're going to have carryover into FY20. So we're reducing the FY19 budget, but we will be amending those monies back into FY20. So we'll have spending authority to continue West Campus construction. So overall, we're actually reducing expenditures in our budget by seven, a little over $700,000. And I'll bring up our fund balances. We like to look at these as well. So this, with the reduction in expenditures, also increases fund balances projected for year end, knowing that a lot of that is capital projects that are carrying forward into FY20 and intend to be spent in FY20. I'll open it up if there's any questions on specific items.
Are there any notable, um... I guess, funds that weren't utilized in 19 that are being moved forward?
No, I wouldn't say so. We do have quite a few funds that we maintain for various reasons. The ones that are highlighted in yellow are all of our capital projects, which have had much more activity in the last 24 to 36 months than the county has previously done. So you'll see a lot of spending in there and also in the debt service as we did borrow to fund the roof project in the West Campus. So historically, we haven't had as much activity in those accounts.
Okay.
And your far right fund balance is fiscal year 19, right?
Yes.
Not for next year?
Nope, that's 19.
All right, that's what I thought.
Yes. So this compares 18 actuals to the 19 under our current budget and then under our proposed amendment.
The mental health spend down account?
Yes.
Do you know, it's contained in line...
So line 13.
13.
Yep. So we're projecting a fund balance of about 2.7 million at the end of this fiscal year. The legislation change in this last session has increased the required spend down to be 40% of our annual expenditures and gives us two or three more years to get there. So we continue to work on spending down those funds to get to our required 40% or less.
Is that how big our spend down dollar is? 2.7 million?
Well, if you look, our budgeted expenditures are three and a half million in a year. So we're trying to get down to approximately 40% of that three and a half million in fund balance. And we have, you had approved a couple of projects that will be funded in FY20 to help spend down those dollars. So we're continuing that process.
I'll need to work with you to set that out pretty aggressively, I think.
Okay.
Any questions for Stella?
No. Great job.
The public hearing, thank you Stella.
Yeah, absolutely.
Public hearing is open. If anyone has any questions or comments, I'd ask them to approach the podium, give their name and address for the record. Seeing none.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Carried. All right, now we have under five B1, that's adoption of the...
That would be this document I'll go back to. That's the state form. You're voting on approving this document to be submitted to the state of Iowa, which would then be executed by the board chair.
And is this the same information in a different format?
It is. So we don't look at our accounts the same way that the state looks at our accounts. They group them differently. But it's the same information that we look at consistently, just on a different grouping level.
Okay. And the reason for that, they use a different form?
Kind of more in a departmental.
Okay.
So we're looking at specific departments more often. And the state form will lump departments or split pieces of departments into different functions.
Okay, so in your opinion, would the form that the county uses, that you're using, be more transparent than the form that the state is using?
I think it has more...
Detail.
Detail in it, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Stella?
I will make a motion to approve the adoption of the fiscal year 19 budget amendment number three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the adoption of the FY19 budget amendment number three. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Carried three zero. Then we have item five B2, which is a resolution for FY19 appropriations amendment number three.
So one of the things by code is that we must do a resolution for our spending authority. So this details the spending authority by...
Notice of public hearing amendment to zoning ordinance one. ZC.
Make a motion to approve the notice of public hearing.
I didn't read it in yet.
I will second it.
ZC number five dash 16 dash 19. Michael and Emily Bogey, Bogey, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential.
The motion to approve the notice of public hearing is recited as read.
Okay, thank you. And is there still a second?
My motion stood, it was good, but I will second that new motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. Next is... We have item six on the agenda, approval of plats. We have a resolution, final plat of Meyer Farm subdivision, plat four, section 22, Concord Township. Interim zoning administrator Tammy Henry.
All right, the property is owned by John and Shirley Doemeyer and Jessica, Jesse and Jessica Urthem and is located 1.76 miles east of the city of Holy Cross along Filet Road with a total of 29.693 acres surveyed. The property is owned A1 agricultural. The purpose of this plat is to sell additional ag land to Jesse and Jessica Urthem. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of 5.468 acres surveyed and it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot two is a total of 24.225 acres surveyed and it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot one will use an existing field entrance off of Filet Road. And lot two will use an existing residential access off of Filet Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat and the mortgage holders' acknowledgements are signed and attached. All signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by myself as plat's officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So I'll show you here so that you can... So you can see it. So this piece here is being added. So that's what this plat is looking like. So they're going to own all of these now. And they do farm already. They have a scheduled death. They're just adding additional land. They've actually been semi-using that land and now the neighbors selling it to them.
Questions for Tammy?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the final plat.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution for the final plat of Meyer Farm subdivision, plat four, section 22, Concord Township. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. Thank you, Tammy. Action items, number seven. Seven A is a resolution for regarding appointment of deputies, assistants, and clerks. All six look good, Don. I will motion approval for the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in seven A. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Carried three zero. We have duplicate warrant seven B. And it looks like, uh...
Dubuque Janitorial.
Dubuque Janitorial in the amount of $1,170.
Somebody lost it.
Check was lost.
You think they lost it.
And we know that it hasn't been cashed and, okay.
Write them a new one. I will make a motion to approve the duplicate warrant for Dubuque Janitorial for $1,170.
I will second that motion noting that it was lost in the mail.
All right, all in favor of the motion to approve the duplicate warrant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. Okay, item seven C, resolution approving the amended FY19 secondary road budget to be submitted to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Anthony?
Okay, um, yeah, once, once you guys do the county, county amendment to the fiscal year 19 budget, I have to take it one step further and submit to the Iowa DOT our amendment from our department. So this is strictly taking the numbers that you guys already approved and then putting them in our own DOT form and sending it back to them.
Okay.
Do you know how often counties do this amend? Sense for that?
I would say fairly often. Especially in these, you know, high-risk storm event years, you see quite a few amendments, especially from secondary road departments. So I would say it's pretty common. I know Delaware County does its fair share of amendments as well.
Appreciate your input. Make a motion to approve the resolution for the amended secondary road budget to be submitted to the Iowa Department of Transportation.
I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in seven C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three zero. Item seven D, a resolution to approve support of the FY20 funding for the Rural County Transportation Program, RCTP projects list. Again, we defer to Anthony.
Okay, the, uh, the list of projects for fiscal year 20 for the RCTP Small City Swap Program was reviewed by the ranking committee. And the, the, there's quite a list of towns that applied for the funds this year, which is good. Good participation. So they, the committee is making a recommendation to myself and the supervisors. And ECIA has submitted this, uh, this recommendation to us. So the recommendation is for the city of, city of Centrilia on Old Highway Road for speed signs. City of Graff, Graff Court resurfacing. City of Piasta, Brady Deerwood Streets reconstruction project. City of Rickertsville, St. Joseph's Drive reconstruction. City of Cheryl, speed limit flashing signs. And the city Worthington Park Drive resurfacing. Everything looks good to me and I would recommend that we proceed with this. So where we go from here is you guys approve this, uh, list and then ECIA will get, get ahold of each of the towns and develop 2088 agreements with them.
Okay. Thank you, Anthony. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution seven D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. Seven E, resolution approving the FY20 Dubuque Regional Humane Society contract for boarding services.
Does anyone know if the cost increased? Are they the same?
I do not know if that topped my head.
Is the contract the same for the Humane Society?
So no, we did change it a little bit this year based on our intake. And last year, we had just a monthly charge, irregardless of the number of animal intake. And so as we looked at, they, we asked for them to make a couple proposals to us this year. I met with the, the, um, the president there. And based on the dollar, the two options she gave us in our estimated intake for this year, we thought this would be slightly cheaper than it was for this year, doing the per dog and per cat dollar amounts versus just a monthly amount regardless of the intake. So, and, because we didn't have a really good, I wouldn't say, we weren't quite sure of the accuracy of our intake count with our last provider. And so now we feel confident in the numbers of the Dubuque Humane Society. And this is a very good partnership with our sheriff's department. I've worked with the sheriff and deputy, chief deputy Rinneker on this. They are, they are enjoying this partnership. They're saying that their deputies are taking more time into other public safety matters and not transporting animals, so it's a, it's a win-win for both of us.
Great, thank you for that background, that's very helpful.
The thing has come full circle.
Yeah.
What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving the Regional Humane Society contract for the boarding services.
I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve... Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in seven E regarding the F Y twenty Dubuque Regional Humane Society Contract for Boarding Services. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Seven F, resolution approving the temporary delayed travel restrictions of county roads on June ninth, twenty nineteen for the Quad Cities Bicycle Clubs Tour of the Mississippi River Valley Bicycle Ride. And that is seven F. Anthony, are you aware of this event?
Yes, I am. And this is something they've done in the past and I don't think we've had any issues with it. Sheriff's Department has signed off on it as well. They're not really impacting a whole lot of roads. Mines of Spain Road and Old Massey Road. Be the main routes.
Excellent. I will make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the resolution in seven F. Is there a second?
Second. I have some discussion.
And motion's been made and seconded. It's open for discussion.
Anthony, they, they have, the same race has been run with us before.
Yes.
Or ride, I guess. Maybe this is a ride. And the same roads are being used. They've given us, it looks like the certificate of liability insurance they. Is this the one where we didn't know whether or not the sheriff would provide?
I think that's the next one.
That's the next one.
That's the next one. I just want, I like to take, I know the bikes are allowed on the roads. I think it's important to take time to be sure that we're getting the information that we need to support the resolutions.
It looks like it's been signed off by county engineer, Marjett, county sheriff, Kennedy, and the applicant.
So where do the, where do these get started? Where do they file this? No, not the, we're at the ride, but in our county, where does someone begin this application? A special event permit?
So this is kind of a new process over the last, maybe six, seven years ago is when the board supervisor, supervisors started this. So at times it seems like, I mean, these, these events are getting well-known now and the permit processes is more known now. It usually seems like they either come to our department and then we have to send it over to the sheriff's department for review or vice versa. It starts with them. The application does say the, they need to return the completed application to our department. So I think sometimes you might see it go through the sheriff's department first. But there's.
And, and then I'm assuming this is okay? This is a good use of your, your department's time to shepherd these applications?
I mean, I don't have a lot of time in this, to be honest. I kind of lean into the sheriff's department more on these things to, to make sure that enforcement, or if they feel like the, you know, for safety for enforcement needs to be out there, I try to get their opinion on that. This one is a little more straightforward and routine, as much as that can be. There's not as many routes being affected. Now that said, I will, if there's, there's a particular road or, you know, route that is, is under construction or is, is, you know, spring thaw's happening, you know, I, I try to bring attention to that. But, so I'll look at conditions of the road.
Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Carried three zero. Item seven G, which is the approving the temporary delayed travel restrictions of county roads on August twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen for Hempstead High School Debate Team's Bankston Banger Grand Fondo Bicycle Race. And that is seven G.
I have some questions.
Okay.
So if we were going to compare this one then to the one we just discussed, this is a race and we don't have, it looks as though the sheriff signed off on it, but the attachments indicate that they are not going to be involved in any kind of enforcement or supervision, which kind of undercuts the idea that they're signing off on it.
Yeah, this one makes me a little more uncomfortable. I was, I really wanted to lean into the sheriff's department on this, on, on maybe requiring some kind of enforcement. But they, you know, they're short-staffed. They, they responded, it's, it's a minimum of two hours for off-duty officers at thirty-five dollars an hour. They stated it's up to the organization to, to request that service. There are quite a few roads that do have high traffic count and are of concern. Like you said, bicycles are allowed on the roads. But this is putting a couple hundred bicycles out on these routes and they will be impacting traffic.
Ninety-nine.
What's that, Jay?
Ninety-nine participants.
Yeah, and it's a race.
Any overall hundred is exempt. So that's what they're listing is estimated number of participants, ninety-nine.
So what happens if it's a hundred?
Then they gotta pay money.
Well, there's, their flyer says rider limit two hundred, so.
Well, their application says ninety-nine.
This is one that I've actually talked to some members of the school board about because it's, it's an application from a club inside one of the high schools. It's not from the school district. And, you know, I, I know I voted against this when it came before us before. And for those same reasons, I, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna vote against it again. I, I don't, I don't know. Did you have any problems with the first race? Anything reported?
No, nothing was. Nothing was, was reported to us. I do see that they are providing arrows will be used for the mark course. Banners will be on private property. But that's not necessarily safety items. That's just directing the route. We don't have a good process for this, you know.
Anthony, under the state's rules, could these people just go out and ride?
Sure.
Okay.
And, and, you know, you'll see large groups organized on the weekends anyways. There's a big, quite a big bicycle contingent in this county.
Is it preferred that they give us notification, let us know that they're?
I mean, for these, these events, I mean, yes, we would love to know that this is happening. So this is definitely a benefit to us. Gives us a heads up on the roads and the routes that we need to inspect.
They can't close the roads by themselves. If ninety-nine people wanted to ride this route on a race, just being organically organized, they can't close the roads themselves.
No, they can't take up both lanes. I mean, they're still considered a typical vehicle of the road. They can be cited for that.
So this is different. Are these roads closing as they go through?
No, but they are impacting traffic by slowing traffic down.
And temporary signage as well is allowed.
They have their own just route markers.
Yeah, so, yeah, not like official.
No.
But are they required to do that because of our, something in our process?
That, that's what this is notifying, that that's going to occur. That's one of the stipulations that it's notifying, right? It's, I'll go to the name of it. Temporary delayed travel restrictions.
That's what it is.
That's the name of it, so. That's, that's what they're, they're stating that, hey, there's gonna be some temporary travel restrictions because there's this ride happening. That's this public notice to the public that that's occurring and that they've been given procedural, I don't know if approval's the right word, but probably is, approval, if the board approves the resolution, approval to do that. And what that means would be whatever this application is, and we can, you know, you can read the application. And agrees to leave the right of way in the same condition as found, clean above litter, debris, you know, and a whole bunch of other stuff. That's what, that's what the parties are agreeing to do. That's what you're signing off on is that, hey, you've understood this and you're familiar with it and you've reviewed the application and they've submitted it. I would assume that's what your signature means.
Yeah, and we have some release of liability language that, you know, we have a couple attorneys in the, in the room here, supervisor McDonough.
They have to, they have to show proof, proof of the insurance.
Maybe we should review that, but.
I mean.
Which isn't attached and it wasn't before. It's just a sample.
Well, it's on the special event application in the paragraphs above our signatures. There's some release of liability right there.
No, I know that, but they don't, the insurance, proof of insurance isn't there. It's just a sample of something that they intend to kind of get.
Yes. I don't think they want to get the insurance until they're approved.
I see in here the sponsoring organization is the Hempstead High School Debate Team.
And I think this is new. I don't know if this is where we need Denise, but maybe Tammy knows. I mean, this, the application and the hundred-person fee, hundred participants, that was set just seven, five, seven years ago? Do you remember some of the bike clubs objecting? Were you here then?
No, that was right before me, but I remember it, yeah.
Yeah, so prior to that, there was no procedures?
Yeah, there was no procedures and then.
I mean, we've come a long way. We've got, now we're approved, hey, have insurance. Are you, what kind of organization? Who's organizing it? What are you doing? What are the routes? I mean, I, I think that's a very good step and I think you've got a lot of documentation here that is available to the public that here's what's happening. Now, a next step is if we did like we did our detours and stuff, we posted out by email, we posted on our website or social media is another consideration. But we've come a long way. And there's a fee. I forget, what is the fee if it's over a hundred? What is the fee? What's it? Was it fifty? Oh, that's pretty, pretty mild then. I thought it was more. So I guess I'm curious to what, what your objection is, what's your, what's your rub on this process?
It's a race. Same issue I had in the springtime. It's a race and to me, that there is an understanding that our roads will be prepared for a race. It's not a ride. It's, and that's a different type of thing I would like to see. The application be somebody who's not a club, that it comes from an entity that can execute an insurance liability form. That's what I'm saying. But it's the, that, that's my hesitancy. I know that they can do this. I, might be nice to have the sheriff engaged in this a little bit better. I don't know that I want him stopping traffic, but we should have some kind of system where he has some kind of response to this.
He signed it. Is that his signature?
That's Harley Potoff's, Captain Harley Potoff's.
Do you think he was, I guess we're, we're not gonna be able to ask that, was he authorized to sign it?
Yes, and he, I think he signs on, off on all these.
Okay.
Here's a unique question. Maybe the county attorney can come in. So let's say we've got a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit on one of these county roads and somebody goes over forty with their regular pedal bike. Would they be eligible for a violation or a ticket? So that, that's whatever types of transportation you're on. Curious.
Any other discussion?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution for the Hempstead High School Debate Team's Bankston Banger Grand Fondo Bicycle Race. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Is that okay to second it and then vote?
Yeah.
Nay, okay. Two to one, carried. Seven H, resolution approving the contract with Tenex Software Solutions for Elections E Poll Books.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in seven H for the Tenex Software Solutions for Elections E Poll Books. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried three zero. We're on item number eight on the agenda, which is communications. This is correspondence that would be received and filed. So we have proof of publication for zoning cases. I'm not.
Yep, Dean and Merle Bartles and probably a few others in there. So I'll make a motion to approve the, receiving, yeah, motion to approve the proof of publications for zoning cases.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve. And they'll be actually received and filed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I've got a letter from the city of Dubuque regarding a voluntary annexation. And that is item eight B.
Motion to receive and file.
I will second that with some discussion.
Okay, motions made and seconded, open for discussion.
Possibly the county attorney could identify this one. I was, the, the parcel that was questioned, this, there's a letter basically with a voluntary annexation off of one fifty-one as you're going to the airport. And the surrounding parcels are all owned by either the county or owned by the state highway one fifty-one. And it's our understanding that the city has annexed the one fifty-one corridor and provides services to this parcel. And so maybe just comment today and if the rest of the board wants an actual response, then we can do that. But is just a corridor of annexation enough to have a contiguous bodies in order to annex an area? Did you represent the city of Piasta when they were going through theirs by any chance? When they tried to do Thunder Ridge?
No.
Okay. Alright.
And I did have, CJ, I had some calls on this. Some residents that weren't thrilled about their neighboring subdivision. Not so sure that it's right on the other side of a common road. Elmwood or, yeah. Yeah, and then people on the other side who didn't want to be annexed were questioning whether this is an island, you know, surrounded by county property, you know, property owners' land. So that was the issue. So we found out this morning that they had, and I don't know if annexed or is the right word, but got some kind of an annexation or easement of some kind that to do with extending utilities.
Utilities for sure. I would assume they have an easement. I assume the DOT doesn't, didn't sell the city of Dubuque one fifty-one. The DOT didn't sell
No.
the city one fifty-one. So they just have a utility easement.
And the DOT usually has title. They don't have easement, so I suspect they would own that ground.
So the DOT would?
Yes.
So what, does the city got some kind of permission to run?
It might be like a utility easement.
Okay. And then does a utility easement then, does that mean they own the property and they can say this is contiguous? That's really what it boils down to. There's gotta be some case law out there, so.
So maybe two things. The public hearing is June third, June third at the Dubuque City Council. And so my other question would be would the board want the county attorney to review this and create an opinion whether he feels it's allowed under state law?
I would say if it's allowed, we probably don't need to do anything.
Well, that's my question.
If it's not allowed, then I would think that we would reach out to the city and possibly attend that meeting and raise the issue. I know that's, and that's coming up, that's next week, right?
Would you be able to review this within the next four business days?
And that's not a meeting night for us. So I could probably, if, if you wanted somebody, you know, to attend.
My education versus, you know, opposing this is what I would state. I'm, I'm generally, the developer wants it, the people buying the property want it. There are the neighbors that are constituents. But, but I'm just interested in how the, the law works and how they're, how they're able to do that. Yeah. That's another one, not on this one, but yeah, because this is not a volunteer. This is, this is the developers saying, yeah, I'm, I'm all for it. I'm not only going to volunteer, I want in. I'm all in the city.
Okay, and I just want to know if that's, assume that they've done their due diligence, but if not, I mean, I think it's I mean, if you look, on us to answer the questions raised by our constituents.
I mean, the county tax dollars lost are probably significant over a twenty-year period. I'm sure the homes that go up there will be three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollar homes.
And I think there's some multifamily in there as well.
There is. That's one of the reasons they wanted to, one of the reasons they wanted to get in the city is provide water for those multifamily homes, which I'm supportive of.
Okay, so I think receiving file on this?
I think I did that. Did I, can they say receiving file and wanting to discuss?
Did we make the motion?
Yes, and it's seconded.
There was a motion to receive and file, and it was seconded. We were in discussion. I think we can move forward with the vote on receiving and filing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. Okay. Now we're to item nine on the agenda, and that would be appointments, and we have the Fire Department Loan Fund Committee, one vacancy for a four-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Do we know if it needs to be male or female? Has it been posted as open? I don't think it's been on our ongoing list. I think we had a, just a resignation just at our last board meeting. I just don't want them to be handed off one to the next if we're trying to build gender balance.
Did we have a? Have we received other applicants? We have in the past. If, if we have, if somebody has a question, we have tabled these till the next meeting, which gives the person raising the question, the person on the board raising the question, an opportunity to do some background or whatever, or recruiting. And so I, that would not be precedent-setting to table? Okay.
Do you know if the vacancy was posted? I was surprised to see it because I think the resignation just happened. Just want to be sure that it was actually posted. Motion to table?
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to table. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. And then my understanding is if it's tabled, it'll come back at the next meeting. Okay. Okay. Nine A two would be the MHDD Stakeholders Committee, one provider vacancy for an unexpired term ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one.
This committee is probably ninety percent female and sixty percent vacant. And we go by classification of provider or family advocate. I, I don't know. We might need a little help with this one. We're trying to fill it, but we're filling it just with women. You know, and I mean, it's been posted as a vacancy probably for four years on our agenda, I mean, on the website, but.
I don't know this candidate, but they seem very qualified from their information on here. So I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
There's a motion made and seconded to approve the application. And this is in pretty small print on here. Ray?
Heister.
Heisler?
Heister with a T.
Heister. Okay. Is it Rayal?
I think so.
Okay. I just, I'm having a hard time reading this, or I should get my cheaters out. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the application. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried. All right. Nine A three Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority, one vacancy for an unexpired term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. And we have an application from Chad Cox. And I believe that's the only application we have here.
I do not know the candidate, but he was recommended by a colleague, and I forwarded him the application at his request, and it's here in front of us.
I had a conversation with Chad Cox at where Chuck was having his constituency open house. And he was well aware of what he was going to be doing, what the time commitment was, and his interest as well, so.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve the application for Chad Cox.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the application of Chad Cox for the Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero.
Chair, if I may, I do have some information on seven A one. If you want to go back, or do you want to just approach at the next meeting?
Okay.
Or sorry, nine A one. This is for the Fire Loan Revolving Loan Department. It was posted on your agenda on May thirteenth. The Fire Department Loan Fund Committee, one vacancy for a four-year term ending June thirtieth. Man or woman posted on five thirteen of nineteen. So it was posted on your meeting agenda on the thirteenth.
Was it posted on our website?
No, it would be posted just on here. The applications is the only thing on the website.
Okay. So then I, I guess I'll ask a question. The other, the stakeholder and the Catfish Creek, were they posted on the website?
They're all posted on your agenda. All the openings.
I understand that.
I don't think the website has their.
No, it only has the applications on there.
I just want to know if we're being consistent. If we approve some that weren't posted on the website and...
I don't think any of them are ever posted on our county website.
If none of them have been, and, and we want to do that, that's a separate issue as far as I'm concerned.
I think this committee listing is on our website. Of these, the ones that are open, kind of historically endlessly open, they are there. I don't know that we do put things, which is one of the problems with the website. We don't post things and take them off. I don't even know whose job it is. And I'm not worried at this point about consistency, honestly, because I think if you go back too far, it's always been kind of, you know, we're happy to have an application. But we do want to work toward that, and maybe that was going to be part of the discussion of the item that we tabled earlier in our work session day. You know, we should be concerned about that, but I don't know. Right now, we're just happy to have folks apply.
So it, so it appears that, I guess we're all right. So the applications on the website are boards and commission, and then each boards and commission is there, and if you go into each of the board and commission, you'll see who's on there and if there's vacant positions. So you would, the composite list is not on there, but each individual area is.
And they may or may not be up to date, even with the listings of people. So, you know, the, the more you go in, the more confusing it kind of gets. But that's something that I hope our new website will be highlighting, and we can make that be front and center for people to know how to participate in the county government.
Dawn, thank you for that information. At the next meeting, I will plan on supporting the person who applied, but we did make a motion to table. So I think we'll live with that, and based on the information that this has been here, that I appreciate the information. All right. Nine B. Boards and commissions. I think this is for information only.
We will have another addition to this. There is a vacancy on our mental health disability on the regional board. And Dawn, I might need your help with how to do that. So it's a regional board, but it is a Dubuque County representative.
Okay.
Okay. Pass the supervisor? What's the, what's the other qualifications for that one? The Regional Board for Mental Health in addition to the supervisor?
On the advisory council.
Oh, advisory.
So it's the advisory council. It requires you to drive to a monthly meeting. They, I'd like to post that somehow, and, and we have a stakeholders meeting coming up. I would like to see if I can build some interest in that. It's directly to the region, and they do have an elected person on that governing board, non-voting, but all the same. It's a, you know, if someone wants to be an advocate, it's a place to shine.
Good.
Sounds good. All right, anything else under nine B? If not, we'll move to item ten, which is personnel requisitions. And ten A is permanent full-time deputy auditor payroll slash finance for auditor's office, one position.
So this one, at this time, the auditor has had several conversations with the incumbent who has indicated her intention to retire in the next couple of months, but has not given a specific date. When the auditor and I talk about that, we talked about this last week. Just the crucial responsibilities of this position, we do not want to leave this one vacant for very long. So we would at least ask the board to, through this requisition, to move forward on the posting of this job and start accepting the applications. Again, we would not take any action until we receive a written retirement notice. But the auditor has had actually several months of conversations, and it's, it's not if, it's when in the coming months is what we anticipate. So they would, this would not approve the hire of it. That would be further down the line. This would just be opening up and posting and accepting applications.
She did seem surprised that this was on our agenda. She's our longest-tenured county employee. Something like forty-five or forty-six years, so. I would have hoped that there would have been some discussion with her about this, but she did seem surprised. So if she says, I'm staying for another year, how does that work?
We're just asking to open up to take applications at this point. We, we were hoping for a couple-month notice, but we're not, we don't know if that will happen. Because we had talked about this during the budget of having somebody train with her for a couple of months. But obviously, we're not going to do, recommend any hire until we have something in writing for retirement.
Well, we've added a CPA position in that office with Megan. Is that somebody who could fill in, help?
Yes.
Process? I mean, I...
The position does the payroll.
I, I don't want anybody to feel like we're jumping the gun or pushing somebody out the door, so.
Would you, a motion to table? To give opportunity for there to be communication with the employee?
Kind of feel better along those lines. I don't know if you had a discussion with her today, but. Auditor Dolan requests this?
Yes.
Signed off on it? As a department head and elected official, I would support that.
You would support what?
Her, this, the requisition that she's requesting.
If we tabled this, would that give you and Denise a chance to talk to her about?
There's been months of discussion that the auditors had with her. I'm unaware that she thought this was a surprise. I thought that they had discussed that last week. I was unaware of that, but I mean, it's, it's, she's even spoken to many staff about retiring, so I would I'm shocked that there was, that that conversation did not happen.
Then maybe I got the wrong by, by.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition for the deputy auditor position.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the personnel requisition for the deputy auditor position. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Carried two to one. Ten B. Permanent part-time life enrichment coordinator for Sunny Crest Manor. One position. And this is an increase, but it is a budgeted position.
That is correct.
Was this an unfilled?
She says, she has money available for this position, but the, it would be an additional part-time FTE.
Okay. And you have, that you recommend approval?
Yes.
Right?
We've had several discussions about some work comp injuries and having more resources there at this time. This is a lot of the, the dinner activity and to and from beds, and we've had some work comp issues there. So this would be adding additional part-time staff to help with that transporting of residents.
It says, even in an effort to reduce falls, that might even be by of residents.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero. Ten C. Permanent full-time deputy sheriff, jail division, one position. And...
Dawn, do you know how this came about?
This, this one?
Yeah.
This is a retirement, an upcoming retirement.
It's probably on here, and I just skipped over it.
This isn't the tech position?
Other retirement. I see it.
The tech position?
No, this is not a tech position. This is a, in the jail.
So we still have that open?
Yes, they have done interviews, but they have, you're talking about Steve Halen's position. They've done interviews, but I, I'm not sure if he's made a proposal yet or an offer.
Any other discussion? We've got is there a motion on the deputy sheriff, jail division, one?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. Item eleven, tabled pending items. We have the one that'll go to the next meeting. Public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person, which are not on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries, and I will... in their ability to respond to such inquiries and I will code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. I'm seeing all staff, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Would you like me to know the staff?
Some moved to second.
Okay, well, look at.
Oh, oh, we didn't vote on the adjournment yet.
We haven't voted on adjournment. Seriously.
You have a motion in a second?
Do you have any? I just read the public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Do you have any comments? Yeah, I think we're going to do that. Our next meeting. All right, there was a motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Your timing was impeccable, Chuck.